Board of Appeals, Thursday, July 6, 2023. First order of business is to call the rule. I'll call it. Bruce Forrester, Chairman, here. Craig Barrow.
Here.
Mike Pratt.
Here.
Rex Meyer.
Present.
Ellie Huss.
Here.
The next thing is the approval of the previous minutes from the June 12, 23 meeting. Do we have a motion to?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. The next order of business is a motion to adjourn pursuant to the County Board's vote on petitions number 23P-1604, 23P-1606, and 23P-1607. However, one of those petitions, and I don't know which one it is by number, was...
Alice, do you remember what the Whitney?
It was what? The Whitney?
Trial number?
Yeah.
I don't know offhand.
I don't know which one it is, but it was the Whitney. Whitney House. And that was...
Let's get that on the record. Hang on just a minute. 1606.
1606?
Anboy Solar One.
Okay. And that was set aside to come back to the Board at a later time. Correct?
It was tabled till next month.
So we'll leave the Whitney mansion out of it and we'll go the rest of it? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn pursuant to the County Board's vote on petition 23P-1604 and petition 23P-1607.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. There's no old business on here, so we'll move on with new business. On new business, we'll start off with petition number 23-P-1610. Petitioner is HTIMS LP, permanent parcel number 10-13-14-301-006, map amendment from R2 Single Family Residential District to C2 Planned Office and Business District for small equipment sales, service, and repair in Harmon Township. I now call the Lee County Administrator Dee Duffy to the witness stand to give a summary of notification of this petition. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? Okay. Now, you've signed your name. You printed your name. Now state your name.
Dee Duffy.
Proceed.
So a notification for this petition, petition 23P-1610, was sent by certified mail to all adjacent landowners in the zoning board agenda, and petition was displayed on the Lee County website. I would like to submit a copy of the filed stamped petition as exhibit ZO1. A legal notification for this petition was published in the Dixon Newspaper on June 13, 2023. The required newspaper invoice and the collection of the certified mailing receipts have been submitted for the record as exhibit ZO number two and ZO number three. The Lee County Health Department indicated in an email in June, on June 12, 2003, that they had no concerns with the rezoning of this parcel and went on to further explain that this property is served by community water and will be connected to a private septic system. And I'd like to submit the Health Department's email exchange as exhibit ZO number four. And on March 8, 2022, the Village of Harmon passed ordinance HO308222 vacating a portion of the public alley on Block 1 of the Wheeler Addition in Anboy. And I'd like to submit the Village of Harmon's ordinance vacating the said alley as exhibit ZO number five. And that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Okay. Any questions for Dee?
Are you going to show us on the map where it's at up there?
I'm sorry. We're looking at this parcel right now?
So what was vacated by Harmon? The whole lot? I thought I understood it was part of the alley.
See this red line? There's... Can you see the two dotted blue lines going through these two parcels here? That used to be an alleyway, and that has now been vacated.
Vacated to who or what?
The Village of Harmon vacated it to probably, and I'm just going to assume this to the... to Sean Smith, petitioner.
No further questions.
Anybody else?
So we're just dealing with the alley right now then?
I just wanted it clear on the record that the alley was vacated two years ago, or last year, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I would like to call the petitioner. If he... Please come forward. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? Sign your name. Print your name down. And if you want to sit over here by one of those microphones?
I believe he has some exhibit he wants to...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have an extra one, Sean?
Court reporter will also need one if you have an extra.
And the first thing I'd like you to do is to state your name.
Sean Smith. On behalf of HTMS LP.
We'll list up close to you.
Oh. There we go. Sean Smith.
Okay.
Okay, so the handout kind of explains a little bit about what we do. We rebuild automatic pedestrian door parts, like parts that are at grocery stores, airports, hospitals, police stations, and even downstairs. And we moved Harmon in 1982. Currently, we employ 47 employees. Everything is pretty much small assembly stuff, pretty low impact. And so the plans for doing this rezoning is to extend our current building. And then the next phase is to add another building to the north side of it, the increase for inventory and potentially 20 more employees. It's just going to be a single-story steel building. The space in between the two buildings will be allocated for the drain field and septic treatment system, which has been approved by the Health Department already. So that'll at least handle all of the waste that we'll be producing, which is just toilets and sinks. So... So if you flip through here, you'll see like Phase 1, which is just extending 90 feet on the current building. And then the second phase is to build a 50-by-190-foot building to the north side of it. The current building has a 10-foot setback from the property line, which was set when that building was built. So we're just going to follow that and then have a 17-foot setback on the east side there, and then 25 on the north side and then west side. So that's kind of the summary of what the idea or the plans are for it. Any questions?
I'll say. So you've got Phase 1 and Phase 2. So the expansion, you know, is got down for Phase 1. At what time are you looking to do Phase 2?
Phase 2, I'm hoping to do it in the next like 2 to 3 years.
Phase 1, when would that start?
Hopefully next year, as long as all the construction and this stuff comes into play. The first step will be installing the septic system and making sure that's all tested out and everything, so...
Where's your... Thinking back to when you were, you know, doing some of those changes years ago, where's your sending and receiving area at for shipping stuff in and out?
That's actually across the street on the west side of First Street in the main complex that we've got on the other side.
Well, how do you move stuff between buildings? Do you run a forklift across the streets or...?
We do it by hand. Go use a cart. Luckily, the traffic's not too bad, except for the grain trucks, so...
When was the original part of the building built?
I don't really recall, but I think it was in the 90s.
How long have you been at Harmon?
Me?
No, I mean, business.
82, 1982. Yeah, my dad moved there in 82. He bought the old car dealership that was in the Quanza Hut there and then slowly grew from there.
So what was these two lots before? Was there houses on them? They were R2.
Yeah, there were two houses on it, but they have since been removed.
You didn't remove them? Somebody else had removed them?
No, we removed them.
You removed them?
Yeah, we wanted to rent it out, but they were in just such disrepair that it would have cost way too much money to...
So you've owned both these lots for a while then?
Mm-hmm.
And the alley in between was never part of the original purchase then?
The alley was an after purchase. We purchased it from the Harmon Township. And we talked to the water people, Jimmy Jackson, and he stated that the only water line that was servicing through that area was to go to that building that's currently there, so...
So what mentions in here is the Health Department. So your present building, that's on a septic system there or something then?
Yep. Yeah, the current septic system is just north of that building. It's a 100-foot stretched drain field, and then it has two septic tanks with an aerator.
So what do you have to do for the new building? Will there be restrooms in the extension too then, or how are you doing that?
Well, there will... We're going to keep the restrooms in the current building, and then in the new building, we'll have two restrooms in that.
Phase 2 or...?
Phase 2. But I need to move the septic system because the tanks are currently on the east side of my building. So I need to move those so that they're out of the way of the building.
So the whole town of Harmon's on septic systems, you think?
As far as I know, everyone's on the city water supply and then septic for their waste.
I would say that's correct.
What are your plans for expansion after Phase 2?
After Phase 2? Hopefully not for a very long time. This should be able to expand us enough to hold over the demand for, I would hope, a good 15, 20 years.
So in the past, how many years has demand increased to necessitate this expansion?
I'm not 100% sure what that would be. I'd have to talk to my dad on that one.
Okay. So you mentioned that the assemble. What exactly does the business company do?
So I should have brought a little sample of what we do, but if you go to the grocery store like Oliver's or something, well, there's a unit at the top that opens the door. Well, we have customers across the nation that send us bad units that don't work anymore. And we tear it all apart and put new bearings and grease and gears in it and then box it up and send it out UPS. It's either... It's rebuilt, you know, either good as new or better than new, so...
Okay, so would you classify that as manufacturing?
No, we don't manufacture.
You manufacture nothing, you're just repairing?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, everything we do is... There's another OEM company that has the original design and everything. So we're just repairing the units.
Okay.
You keep the same serial number then that it came in with? If it has a serial number?
Yeah, we keep the original serial number, and then we also put our own serial number on it just to keep track of warranties and stuff like that.
Has your business grown the last 10 years or not? I mean, based on the number of stores that are closed and going online?
We've been slowly growing. The ADA Act has actually helped increase the business for that, requiring automatic doors for public areas and whatnot. So... And the good thing is, one, there's a recession or something, they come calling us because it's cheaper than putting in a new one, so...
Does most of the product come in and out UPS?
Yep. Yep, it all comes in UPS. Yeah, because the largest thing is like 45 pounds.
So there's another lot to the... Be to the east of that?
That's the church's lot.
Bear lot.
That's on the other side of the tree line there.
Right.
Yeah, that's the United Methodist Church.
But it's bare, there's no buildings on it?
No. They just have the little tiny parking strip on Grove Street there.
Have you spoken with them about the expansion and the construction of additional buildings?
Not personally, no.
But they would have been notified that you were doing this?
Yeah, with that letter.
Right. Okay. They just mowed their lot, right? It's grass or...?
Yeah, it's just grass, but...
The church itself is a couple of blocks away, isn't it?
No, it's on the other side.
It's on Grove Street there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All your other buildings are C2?
I believe so.
Yes. They're all on C2.
Good.
What's that? Anybody in the audience have anything on this?
Bruce, Alice has some questions when she gets back.
Okay. Is anybody back here having any questions on this?
He needs to have a microphone.
Keith Wells, trustee with the United Methodist Church. This property that he is wanting to change from residential to commercial is the west half of some property that we owned since 10 years ago. And we sold it to another landowner. And they put trees on the property line between the property he's going to have or he's got and our property. The property was split in half. He's got the west half and we got the east half of that property.
I think all right now is questions.
The question is, will his property change to residential? Will that affect our half of the property, which is residential? He wants to go to industrial, and we want to keep our half into residential.
Your petition is to change it to a C2, correct? Not industrial?
Not industrial, it's just to a C2.
Just to a C2? And you stated that it's a...
Yours would stay the same? He's only petitioning for his...
Okay, then I have no problem with that.
Thank you. You want to get out?
We're going to have to go through this then, right? For each petition. Even though... Same, everything applies to the other petition.
Right, well, we're going to do them one at a time.
Is there any different questions for the other petition, you think?
May not be. Alice, do you have any questions?
I do, I apologize. Are you aware of the parking requirements for the commercial district?
No, not currently, no.
Okay. Are you willing to come into compliance with those requirements?
As best to my ability, yeah.
Are you aware of the landscaping requirements for a commercial district adjoining a residential district?
No, not.
Okay, are you willing to come into compliance with those requirements?
Yeah.
How many total buildings are there that comprise your business?
Nine.
And you started out with one?
Correct.
And what was the square footage of the initials building?
It looks like a 50 by 100.
And do you know the approximate total square foot footage of all of the buildings that comprise the business?
Not at this time.
All right. Are you able to provide that to the zoning office? Because we will need that information for the parking requirements.
Yeah, I can give that to you.
Nothing further.
Okay. Should we go through the findings of fact?
I guess.
Anybody else have a question at this time? Okay.
So the findings of facts, there's a series of questions that we got to answer to satisfy the attorneys here. Number A is the existing uses of nearby property. So they exist, you know... They are all C2, right?
C2 is except the residential area that the church owns.
To the east.
C2 is consistent with being next to a C2, their building. But it's limited to their property.
So I'm just going to say as A, C2 is going to be next to current C2.
Correct.
And then there will be... The R2 to the east will remain.
Correct.
The R2. The current R2.
What's on the north side?
Multifamily.
What's that, R3?
R4.
R4.
And that will remain too. Okay, so then three things I got there. C2 is going to be next to current C2. B, the current R2 to the east will remain. C, the R4 to the north will remain. So we probably ought to vote on that.
Do we have a motion on those or any comments on them at this time?
So move.
What's that?
I saw move.
So move? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, B, the extent property values will be diminished by any zoning restrictions. So, anybody? Extent property values will be diminished by any zoning restrictions. Let's say that it will not diminish any.
B, there does not appear to be an impact to property values, given the existing similar zoning of surrounding properties.
Well, that's, that's, that's actually C, let's say the property values, let's say. B, extent property values will be diminished by zoning restrictions. I guess, we could say that, that's okay. Okay, so say it again, say it again.
Can you read it back?
Yeah. That sounds good to me. Need a motion for that.
Is there anything under that one? Or can we have a motion for that one? At this time?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any commentary? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, C, the extent to which the destruction of property values promotes the public health, safety, and welfare.
The extent to which destruction of property values promotes public health, safety, and welfare is none.
That's a nice sweet answer, none.
Anybody else? We have a motion?
I still move.
Rex's mo, his motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Greg's seconds? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
D, the gain to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner. The gain to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner. I don't think there's any there either.
I don't think there is either. But do we have a motion for the word none?
So moved.
Greg makes a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ally seconds? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
E, the suitability of the subject property for zone purposes. The suitability of the subject property for zone purposes. That's a-
The property is currently vacant, vacant. Therefore, cannot be inhabited as a residence.
It is vacant with no house in place. And I'd say B, it's adjacent to current C2s.
Correct.
And you could also say that the city of Harmon recommends this. Send a letter, letter of recommendation, not the city, but?
The bill should not send a letter of recommendation. They just simply passed an ordinance titling over the alleyway.
Well, I thought somebody said something here about they would recommend this change, maybe a misstatement.
They vacated the alley.
Guess that was the Health Department, I read that letter. Okay, so we have two for E. It is vacant with no house in place. And B, it is adjacent to current C2.
I move we adopt. As read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt as we have it. Any comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
So the next one, F, the length of time the property has been vacant as zone, considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the subject property.
The property has been vacant for an unknown time. But no more than five years.
Anything else?
We have nothing else, do we have a motion?
So move.
Wait, Greg has a second? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
G, the compatibility of the present and proposed classification with the comprehensive plan.
The zoning change to C2 would be consistent with the surrounding properties in the area.
But is it consistent with the Lee County Comprehensive Plan?
Does not go outside the class of existing properties.
I would say it's not in conflict with the plan.
So what did you say, Ally?
The first time. The first time?
Yeah, yeah. I guess.
The zoning change to C2, C2 would be consistent with the surrounding properties in that area.
And then Rex, he said it's, it, it is-
I said it was not in conflict with the plan.
Believe it should be noticed, noted that the prevalence of C2 in a largely residential area should be monitored in light of the Lee County Comprehensive Plan.
Okay.
You wanna read those back?
I got A, the zoning change would be consistent with the C2s in the area. And B, it is not in conflict with the Comprehensive Plan. But C2s in the area should be monitored.
Do we have a motion on that?
I move to adopt.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any more commentary? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
The last one is where there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed, whether, whether, whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use. I'd say there is a need in the neighborhood.
I do not believe it's a public need, I believe it's a private need.
So you say not, not a public need, but a private need?
That's what I would state it as. The need is by a private business owner.
Any else? Well, I got not a public need, but a private owner's need. To the question whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use. That's a good answer.
I would say for the public need. There's always a need for more jobs, which he said he was going to apply. The second thing is, it's a business that's growing, so therefore, whether we consider it a public need locally, or a public need basically wherever he's selling it, because he was talking about ADA has created more need for easily opening doors. So.
Okay, so I got A, not a public need, but a private owner's need. B, always a need for more jobs. C, growing business needing more space.
Correct.
That's your three.
We have a motion?
I move to approve that.
Greg made a motion.
Second.
Rex's seconds? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
The last, the next is to the recommendation to the full board.
Would you like to do that?
I make a motion, we recommend this petition for approval to the full county board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommend this to the full county board? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Now. Next on the agenda, that was for parcel one. The next one be for parcel two. So that would be once again, petition number twenty-three dash P dash sixteen eleven. The petitioner is HTIMS LP, permanent parcel number, permanent parcel number ten thirteen dash fourteen dash three oh one dash zero zero eight. MAP amendment from R2, single family. Residential district is C plant, C2 planned office, business district for equipment sales, service, and repair in Harmon Township. You have any comments on the second one? That are different from the first one?
No.
Okay.
I, the exhibits are in front of you. Certified mail and the newspaper invoice came in today, so.
Okay. Then, I have a question. And I don't know how to approach this, but I'm going to ask the question. Since the two parcels are attached next to each other, and we've gone through the statements of fact, unless anybody has any difference on the statements of fact from one parcel to the other, can we repeat those statements as a whole? And make one motion to pass them? Anybody's thoughts? You agree?
Yeah.
You agree, D?
I do accept because it's a different parcel, are there any adjacent or any interested parties that may want to say anything else different because it's maybe closer to their parcel, or?
Okay, we'll ask that question.
Yep.
Anybody have any thoughts on this one? It's a parcel next door. Does it affect anything differently than anything that we've done before?
Can I make a motion that we duplicate the findings of fact?
What's that?
Can I make a motion we duplicate the findings of fact?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to use the same findings of fact? Okay. With that? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
We need a motion to approve to the board to, for the second petition.
You're making that motion?
Yes, I move that we recommend the petition to the Lee County Board.
For approval.
For approval.
Second.
Okay, is there any comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Both of your petitions have passed, will go before the full county board on July twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Good? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next petition. Petition number twenty-three dash P dash sixteen twelve. The petitioner is the Lee County zoning administrator, or Lee County zoning office, permanent parcel number twenty dash eleven dash twenty-three dash one hundred dash zero zero five, a map amendment from an I3 heavy industrial district to a C3 general business district by Ola Township. And I would call the Lee County zoning administrator.
Getting it up. I'm just getting the map up, so you know where we're at here.
And I'm not the state's attorney, but do you have to? Do you need to swear in a second time? Or you're sworn? Okay.
Notification for petition twenty-three P sixteen twelve was sent by mail to all adjacent landowners, county board members in District Two, the Viola Township Road Commissioner, the Viola Township Supervisor, and the Illinois Department of Transportation. The zoning board agenda and this petition is displayed for notice on the Lee County website. I would like to submit a copy of the filed stand petition as exhibit ZO one. A legal notification of this petition was published in Dixon Newspaper on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I submit this notice as exhibit ZO number two. On January sixteenth, two thousand seven, the Lee County Board approved petition zero six dash P dash fourteen thirty-five for a map amendment on parcel number twenty dash eleven dash twenty-three dash one zero zero dash zero zero five to I3 heavy industrial district to allow for an adult entertainment establishment. On March seventh, two thousand eighteen, the Lee County Liquor Commission and the Lee County Executive Committee revoked the business liquor license and its adult entertainment license was never renewed. Therefore, the business closed. In two thousand and nineteen, the property was purchased by Southwest Two Eight Four Nine LLC. Because the use of the property had been discontinued for a continuous period of over three years, on July first, two thousand twenty-one, the Lee County zoning office petitioned the county for a map amendment, taking away the I3 heavy industrial use on this parcel. Under the Lee County Code of Ordinance, ten dash two D dash three optional revocation, if the use of said property has been discontinued for a continuous period of three years, the Board of Appeals has the power to institute proceedings on its own motion to consider the reclassification of the property to another district. At the hearing on July first, two thousand twenty-one, the new owner of the property opposed the proposed map amendment as he claimed he was going to clean up the property and reopen the club. The zoning board voted to table the petition for sixty days, so the owner- so the owner can put a plan together that the zoning board could review. The zoning board has been given updates on the progress of opening the adult entertainment establishment these past two years. The only progress the zoning office has witnessed is the tearing down of one building on the property. According to an email sent from Jennifer Koebe of the Lee County Health Department to the zoning office on May ninth of this year, Ms. Koebe received a phone call from a septic contractor who was contracted by the owner of this property. The septic contractor was going to provide the owner with the requirements for a septic system. On July fifth, two thousand twenty-three, I contacted Mrs. Koebe, asking for an update on the septic system. She informed me that no usable area was found at the property to install a conventional septic system. A representative of the property owner was provided with contact information for a septic contractor who installs more technical systems. As of July fifth, the health department had not received contact from the property owner on how they wanted to proceed. I'd like to submit the health department email exchange as exhibit ZO number three. The Illinois Department of Transportation, Kathleen Smith from I dot responded to the notice of petition with an email indicating a roadway project adjacent to the petition located, adjacent to the petition's location, but did not directly address any support or objection. I'd like to submit that email as exhibit number four. And as exhibit number five, the Viola Township Supervisor Joan Smith, excuse me, Joan Schmidt, responded to the petitioner's notice, giving support to the MAP amendment noted in the Viola Township meeting minutes on June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Dee? Good. So since you are the petitioner, we will ask if the audience has any questions. Anybody?
You got it. You need a microphone?
Certainly. I'm not sure how the board would like to address this. I'm here with Tony Arena, who is the property manager for the property owner. I'm not sure if the board would rather have him testify to give further updates as to what Dee has said, or if the board would prefer us to address those as questions to Dee.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Duffy?
Hold on, I need to understand, so you are representing the property owner or the property manager?
The property owner and the property manager is here with me as well. So my preference would be to have him speak separately, testify separately, if that's fine with the board.
But do you have any questions for?
Not if the board is all right with him testifying as well.
All right.
I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
So, at this time, we will ask the objectors. I don't know whether you're objectors or not. But if you want to come up here to the front table, be sworn in.
Can we have a break? Can we have a short break?
Please.
When we're? Right now? Okay. We'll do this. Do you sound, I swear, or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? I need you to sign your name, enter your name. State your name. Now, for anything, I need you to state your name. And then I'm going to ask you if you mind if we take a short ten-minute break and then we'll have you testify.
Anthony Arena?
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, on this letter on the township, it says the property is currently going to see three general businesses. That's not correct. That's not right. Okay. So it is I three. Okay. And let me confuse, I didn't know. And you want it all in C three? Should I ask you to explain what C three is or something? Explain that. And why you want it?
It's.
Good enough.
Jack.
Have you read it? I have. Yeah, it's what I brought up to sound so good at the last one. I reworded them all. I'm not that smart. Or quick.
He can go if he wants.
Okay.
No, the gentleman behind you.
Oh. We're done with everything that we're doing in Harmon, so. Yes. If you would like to leave.
Oh.
That's probably a good idea. Okay.
Or not, maybe she's in Georgia.
Stop it, Dairy Queen, and buy her an ice cream cone.
Thank you.
Thank you. You found that jar yourself?
Did you get a pretty good rain Sunday, Mike?
You didn't get anything yesterday?
Yeah, I got, well, only three tins at my house, but Don got like seven tins yesterday.
We got tons.
Say, you guys got a bunch, didn't you? How much did you get?
Uh, not anymore. About the same, seven tins. Maybe eight?
Two hundreds.
Three tins at my house, but Don, he had seven tins. Down by the East Grove Union Church, I think they had an inch.
We didn't get an inch, just under.
I turned the hose on him. They're all back, I believe.
All righty. Well, I could give you the brief rundown of the last meeting till now. So when we started, it took us probably, we were in contact with our attorney to get back in contact with the board of when we started the demolition. We took down both big buildings on the property. We started demoing off all the inside, but we had the debris company out there. It did take us a while to get a local guy out there to haul off the concrete. So that was a long process for us. And you know, we started, by the time we left court here, we were probably two months in before we got Bob's demo to come out there. And by the time he got started and dealt with weather, this was a long process taking these buildings down. Besides the fact that we had a ton of concrete, which we didn't realize was all poured in there because they had turned us into that big truck center. And I mean, like a crazy amount of debris came out of that place. From there, we went into moving to the inside and then starting with the septic. We then had a couple conversations with Jennifer, and she brought up the monitoring wells, that would also be an issue. So that took me probably two to three months to run through the EPA to find out that the monitoring wells were approved all the way back in nineteen ninety-seven. They're not an issue. So we had to pick up the NFR letter from the state, which we actually found the guy who wrote the letter. We all got advised of that prior to our meeting, and we then made arrangements for septic. So we ran through about three or four different local septic people because nobody really wanted to touch it because there was, to be quite frank, there was a board issue and they didn't want to step on toes, so one would refer us to someone else, then he'd go to the process, and then he would refer us to someone else. And the last guy was very, very helpful to the point where, let's do some soil tests, and that brought us almost all the way up to about three, four months ago. That's, you know, about a seventeen-month process, sixteen-month process. We then went in and got the soil test done, Jennifer was there, also really helpful, we went through the property, where everything we thought was good was eighteen inches of C six on the whole property. So that raised another issue. So now we had to come with a specialty septic system. At this point, the Bruno family is three hundred and ten thousand dollars into the property, and the only viable option for us left financially is to actually operate the club, get it back open. Because the septic system itself, which we refer to Zider by the county, you're looking at estimates from forty-six to fifty-six thousand dollars. Even they recommended we get to someone else, we called Apex and Rochelle, who's in the process of writing his bid, which they're busy and it's a one-month process for their engineers. And with the specialty septic system, we have to now, it's not like we could do a regular septic system when I pour them. We have to give them all sorts of details, you know, which is not quite the same as just our seeding and everything, so we have to give them a pretty good site plan of what we're putting together there to engineer this system to be safe, clean and healthy, which they can do. And it's just much more expensive than anything else. And that's really the long and short of where we're at. It seems like a long time, but it hasn't really been that long in as far as the time we were out there. Because it took us almost five months to get all that concrete out of there with the one guy we had out there just pulling it out, and he was busy and back and forth. Again, the ongoing septic, and our attorney has been involved the whole way. Every time a septic guy got us a letter, I would forward to Tom so they knew we were being told we couldn't do this. We don't want to step on toes with the county, so we're going to refer this to somebody else. And we just followed that process all the way down until we got to Zider, who came out and said, yeah, absolutely, we'll do it. We did, we redid the soil tests, we know exactly what we have to do, and we will start moving forward immediately. As soon as we get Rochelle's price in, just to make sure it's, everything's in the ballpark, then we'll probably just end up going with Zider and get the thing moving forward, and then it would follow normal construction. Permits, plans, drawings, whatever else has to be done. But at least we're through all the hardship period of getting this big problem over, which were the monitoring wells, which turned out to not be a problem, and the septic system.
So the plan still is to do what with property?
The plan right now is to absolutely open the club back up as a gentleman's club because we feel that is the, we've been spending money, like, in this process of tearing everything down and cleaning, went way out of what we thought. There's no other way to recoup the money financially. And even that, you know, we're not a hundred percent sure, but we know that that's the only route in the path that we could take. So we would be, we are pursuing to open up the club.
So why would that be more viable than some other business?
We couldn't think of another use with the club that we could open up, because we're not going to be opening up a hundred percent of it, we're going to be closing up a lot of the club. But no matter what we could do, there's no other way we could come up with the money that I think would bring the money back on a resale value to us because there's not enough traffic, there's, you know, traffic will move for that type of industry. It won't move for any other thing local because there's nothing else there. We can't compete with another store with Casey's up the street. You know, there's not, there's not another competing market that I think is viable enough to differentiate any type of different money.
Can I ask Dee a question?
Yes.
So the C three that you're requesting, give me some idea what businesses would be available under that, just a general overview.
That's the highest commercial business for business district?
For the C three that you're going to go to, can you open a Casey's, can you run a convenience store, what, you know, what can you, just give me or the public an idea?
So anything from retail sales up to a bar. So basically, it's a business that is selling stuff that is open to the general public. So a lot falls in there, but a diner, a bar, a grocery store, a convenience store.
Gas station.
Gas station.
So, so do you have a liquor license?
Nothing is, everything's gone right now with the property, so all that has to be reapplied. In the last meeting, that's why we took that and moved forward a little bit because we offered, when you guys offered to table it, was because we know that that was the direction that we would be heading. So without the special use for adult entertainment, we probably wouldn't have spent the additional seventy thousand that we put into it to this point. So we would have to go through the permitting process for a liquor license, whether it's a standard liquor license or the adult entertainment license, which is packaged with the liquor, all at the same time. And for us, it's just the business that we know at hand that Mr. Bruno could operate. It's not like we're in the grocery store business, or we're not in the bowling alley business, or we're not in the gas station business. That's what was there, that's what we had. That's sort of what we know.
So how did you lose your liquor license?
We were not, we had sold it at that point. And the manager and them, they lost the liquor license, if I am not mistaken. And like we said last time, Mr. Bruno was an absentee owner on the property. So there were some things that were happening during that time that he was not aware of. So when they lost that license, Mr. Horn died, and then I believe there was some local manager, I believe was, I believe, had sold some drugs in the place. And that started the whole thing, and I think the liquor license was revoked, and the adult entertainment license was just not reapplied for because then everyone was dead. And at this time, no one even knew how to get a hold of him. Because the guy who had the deal in the paper with Mr. Bruno had passed away. So there was a void, a very long void period of time before we even knew what was happening.
And you understand that that's where we're at, is that period of time with no activity?
And I agree with you, and I understand that wholeheartedly.
That's, that's our goal.
What we're asking you guys right now is we, the use was there. There's not a whole lot there in there that can be, whether it's not the most attractive use to a village or a township, but the use there is probably one of the few uses that I think could be made viable. And we're asking you to let that happen so that we could just move forward and try and recoup some of this money.
Just to be clear, during these events that occurred that eventually led to arrests and the closure of an establishment, the current owner was a part owner at that same time. Is it your testimony that all of the rubble and the debris have been removed from the project site then?
Ninety-nine percent of all the heavy rubble and debris have been removed. Some landscape trees we knocked down, remember, because we knocked down the house and the automotive center. So all that's really left is the main. So all that's really left is the main property. So there is some scrap debris. There's some slab property that we want to take out. But until we know exactly where we're building and where, and really a lot of it lied on what this new septic system was going to lie, what he needed. He was going to be able to utilize the old tanks for some sort of transfer. Or we're going to have to move some of the rest of the concrete out. Whether we needed something for propane store, you know. Because all that's left are three separate flat slabs that are right adjacent to the property. One where coolers and refrigeration was, which we since took out. Are we going to put that back in there? We just haven't got to that point. We're to the point now waiting on the last bid, where then we have to go through a full set of drawings to everybody, because everyone needs to actually size everything.
And it's your testimony that part of your delay was due to board politics and septic companies not wanting to work with you?
I didn't say that wasn't quite, I did not say that was part of the problem. But I said, I was having a hard time finding a septic contractor at the time because he felt that the board did not want that there. And as a local contractor, he did not want to step on anybody's toes and would just bow out of the bidding.
Okay, so did you go outside of the county to seek other bids?
No, we found a guy who was finally referred by one of the demo guys. Was a local, local guy who also, first thing he did was call the board. I believe someone here on the Health Department. And she said, "Okay, let's go ahead, you can go ahead, but we're going to move forward and let's go through and see how everything sets." No one believed we still had the monitoring well problem at that time. And we still had bad ground at that time. And that's when we started moving forward. The job itself for him was this was too big for him. Because he does not do the specialty system.
You've testified that the delays in this timeline and why you are unable to provide further progress at this time is due to various different things that happened outside of your control, correct?
A little bit, yes.
Do you have any evidence? Email communications? Things that took place, dates that you met with contractors? Any documentation to provide to the board?
Sure, I can put some stuff together. I dealt with four contractors through this whole process. So, and a lot of that is when they could get through, and time, and weather, and stuff like that.
But you did not bring anything with you tonight to the hearing?
No.
In your opposition to this?
Right.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
I think the issue, I think the issue is the fact that it has taken so long. And according to our ordinance, if it hasn't been used for three years, then it's time to do something different. And I believe that that's the reason that we came up with what we were, what we're doing right now. I don't know that the proper thing isn't to go ahead and remove the I3, take it back to a C3, and then have you come back in and reapply. I think that would be the best way to approach it.
For clarification to the board, you will need to first revoke the special use permit and then amend the text, or the map.
Say that again.
You would have to first revoke the special use permit and then amend the map.
Okay.
So that's the permit you're on now? 1613 is a revocation of a special use permit. That's the one that you presented? Our 12, you did 12?
I did 12.
We want to do 13 first.
1612 is the map amendment, taking away-
Yeah, we're on the map amendment first.
Taking the zoning.
That's taking away the zoning and moving it down to the lower category.
But what she just said was just opposite.
It probably does not matter what order you do it in, but...
I was trying to clarify their separate actions, so...
Say again. Would you like to comment?
Yes, please, if I could ask Mr. Arena some questions.
Is anyone sworn in? Just questions.
I'm happy to be sworn in if the board would prefer. I'm sure I'll make some comments as I go along with questioning.
You want to swear? Do you sound like you swear or are you under penalty of perjury that the testimony is not in agreement with it?
At this time, it's just questions of the person, correct? His testimony is after he asks questions.
Yes. But he is the attorney, so he can ask questions.
Yeah, then you could ask questions of the person, given an interest of party in the public.
And I need you to state your name.
Thank you. Thomas Witkin. Mr. Arena, you earlier went through a bit of a timeline, starting back when you referred to Mr. Bruno. He's the owner of the owning LLC, correct?
Correct.
How was he initially involved in the property? Was it lending money? Was he an active business participant?
Yeah, he was approached to lend money, to borrow money, to a gentleman who was buying the club. And he secured the interest of the club to secure his note.
So it was essentially a note and mortgage, like a typical home purchase?
Correct.
So when you said he was a silent partner, he wasn't behind the scenes doing any work, he just lent him money?
Not in the business, right, only on the financial one?
And when exactly did he become involved in the business?
Excuse me?
When exactly did he take over the business, become involved?
I'm not 100% sure, but I think it was in 19, I'm almost, I think, but I'm not 100% sure.
Not so much in terms of year, but in terms of chronology you laid out before. You said there was a prior owner who got into some trouble. And he died, I believe, is what you said?
Correct, Mr. Horn died, it was the owner of the club.
And was Mr. Bruno involved at any point other than lending money before Mr. Horn died?
No.
So he had nothing to do with anything that happened before? And so he only came into ownership by foreclosing on the mortgage functionally?
Correct.
After he got involved, did you and his other employees look into other alternative businesses for this parcel?
Yeah, originally, he just wanted us to sell it.
And why didn't you?
At that time, he had $270,000, and I think we were offered $51,000 for the property.
And was that, that offer based on the understanding that it would not be an adult entertainment establishment?
Correct.
Does Mr. Bruno operate other, or own other businesses that you operate?
One more time, please.
Does Mr. Bruno operate other businesses, or own other businesses that you operate?
I don't operate, I'm sort of a project manager.
Have you worked on projects like this before?
Not on this particular project, but on many other projects, yes.
Similar projects in terms of the construction?
Yes, similar.
Is the timeline you've seen here typical compared to those other projects?
Inlines consistent with something like this, where we're working 80, 90 miles away, dealing with a lot of contractors that are not our own house contractors. We're all good guys, but not as much fingertip control as you would if we were right in town.
At any point, was there a lull, when nothing happened?
There were some periods of nothing happened, you know, it was coming out of winter, you know, you can't rip up, and coming into spring, we had a real wet spring here, and you couldn't tear things up. And the gentleman who was doing our work was very, very busy. You know, because once he get, once you get backed up, it's the same old story. You know, we're on for one month, and then he gets backed up, and then he has to go do something else, a big excavator, and then that was, sort of delayed us a little bit.
And maybe I should, could have phrased that better. Was there any point where you weren't trying to make progress?
Never.
When we were here, just shy of two years ago, in September '21, the board indicated that they would table the motion and that they would like quarterly updates, understanding that this is a long process and that it could take time, but also keeping in mind that they didn't want things to just fall by the wayside. And isn't it true that you've been providing those quarterly updates to me, which I've been sending on to Dee Duffy to present to the board?
All the time.
So some of that evidence that was referred to earlier that wasn't brought to tonight has been presented over time, as it's been happening?
Yes. And I believe I even, I even believe referred, I did refer to you over some of the issues I was having with the septic contractors.
And then beyond speaking to Dee Duffy through me and thereby to the board, have you been working with other county officials? I believe you mentioned Jennifer Kolbe earlier?
Yes, we've been dealing with Jennifer. She was good at answering that, all the questions we needed regarding the property.
How frequently would you say you've been in contact with her?
Probably three or four times over the course of that three, four-month period that we were in to trying to get everything finally established on the septic. Because she had all the answers.
And that septic, you kind of skimmed over it earlier, but... Well, I shouldn't say skimmed over it earlier, you touched on it earlier, but... How long did you initially anticipate that septic correction to take?
I thought it would probably take a few months right off the get-go, because it's just, it's just a harder process. It's not as simple as a normal, straight-up little house, because we knew there were going to be some issues. And Jennifer had raised some issues on the grounding and that. And it was then just really the hunt to find the contractor. Once the first contractor, you know, when I was even asking you and other people for other names, we get the first contractor didn't want to do it, it was a rush to try and find people to keep going through and going through and getting it done. Whether that's out of their area or reasons that they didn't want to.
Looking at that photo that's on that middle screen there, it looks like there's three buildings between the two parcels on the southwest corner?
Yes.
Which of those buildings still remain?
The main building.
Just the one with-
Right where your cursor's at. That whole main building is, is still intact. Other than the inside of the far southeasterly building. We gutted that pretty good on the inside.
And then those other two buildings, the one all the way to the south, the little one?
That was a house that was down, and that was a fairly large barn that came down.
And those were both torn down?
Yes.
Why? Why were they turned down?
One was to try and help with the system. When we had originally talked to Jennifer, and it was an issue of septic sizing. When you read the letters from the county the first time, they raised objections to the property, it was in regards to the septic system being too small. There wasn't really, no one really knew there was bad ground. I believe all the letters from the county that I forwarded to you showed a system that was undersized. So our initial purpose was, well, when you take out 5,000 square feet, that's going to make an adjustment someplace. So those buildings were not used by us. We just decided to tear them all down.
What are the other corners here at this intersection? Are there any businesses there?
No, one's an old burnt-out motel. The other one's all farming and ag with a fruit stand and a house. And the other one, I believe, is state police, salt transfer state or something that they use there for.
If you remember back a couple of years ago, when the county first petitioned to change the zoning on the parcels we're talking about today, were there businesses there at that time?
No.
Do you know if any of those business owners have any intent of running a business? Or, excuse me, any of those landowners have an intent of running a business there?
Not that I know of.
And is your understanding because there aren't very many viable businesses there? Or the potential, potentially viable businesses there?
Potentially viable, correct.
If this zoning is changed, and I know this specific petition is just to change from I3 to C3, but the bigger picture here, we're talking about the special use on the north parcel and the I3 industrial zoning. If those two are removed, can you estimate how much it would diminish the property value?
Well, without the special use?
Correct.
Goes right back down to zero.
Now, when you say zero, you were offered $50,000?
$51,000, right, but it was someone who wanted to use it, the truck repair that was there, who would have been probably fighting for the same zoning for the truck repair again over there. At this point, there's, you can't, there's no house. There's nothing but vacant strip club.
So that, that prior offer would have been to use the south parcel in the garage there?
Well, that's what was interesting to him.
And how much money did you say has been invested in it?
Probably, probably north of $330,000 right now.
And how much more money is going to need to be invested in?
Well, I can give you what I presented to Mr. Bruno, and that's the, the septic and well are running upwards of $74,000 right now. We've contracted with both of them, waiting on this last bid. Electrical's another $25,000, general remodeling $140,000. So we're looking at sinking about another $150,000 into it to get it to where it's operating at a nice, reputable, clean, a little bit different than what it was.
And not to check your math there, but I thought I heard a $75,000, a $25,000, and then $140,000.
Correct.
So we're looking at another quarter million.
Yeah, it's a little short of there. I think it's like about $220,000, somewhere near there.
So all in, the investment would be $550,000 to $600,000?
Just under $600,000, as he let me know.
And there's no other business that you or anyone you work with has, has found that could go here and recoup that investment?
No, not that I've looked at. I mean, I'm not the world's greatest businessman, but there's just, I think he would have been, no one's been beaten down the door to acquire that property.
If the petition is granted and the zoning is changed and the special use removed, would we just be back here in a couple of months petitioning to have it changed?
Yes. But where do we do with the, it stops all progress. I can't in good faith have my boss spend any more money. And that was the problem last time, keeping the special use in place. You know, I guess it all bounced to what, what is, whether the special use is going to be granted or not. Because if it's going to be granted, then there's really no reason to move it. Changing zoning on the property, as long as it supports the special use, we don't have a problem with that. But if there's never going to be an objection to the special use, as long as we do what we're going to say, then I don't see why it would have to be removed.
Now, I should clarify a little bit on that last comment. You said, you don't care what the zone is classified as, you just want to be able to carry on the business that you've been investing in, right?
Correct.
So it sounds like you were kind of referring to the petition that we aren't dealing with now, but the final petition of the night, that's for the southern parcel, was petitioned to remove the special use for auto, I believe it was an auto business. There, you have no problem with that, correct?
No, not at all.
So it's not like you're just pocketing special uses?
No.
The only purpose that you're here objecting to the first two petitions is because a lot of money is invested here. And the only way to recoup that money is with this zoning classification.
With the special use. Any removal of the special use, pigeonholes, any, any chance of getting the money back? Because we're going to be spending more, you can't even begin to start building something without knowing that you have what you have in your pocket.
Have you received any pushback from any individuals or businesses indicating that they don't want this property to stay what it was previously?
No.
Has anyone approached you at all about what's been going on there, other than through the county?
No, and I know, I do know that there was a big newspaper article, I believe, one after one of our last meetings, or that came out about reopening of that club. I'd seen it in some local paper, because the owner had sent it to me. That's been a year, and we haven't had anybody call us or talk since that, that point, so...
Can you give an estimate how long it would take to finish the work there and open up if this petition is denied, or these petitions?
I wouldn't even put a time on if it's denied, because I, I couldn't then give a, I couldn't give a start.
If the petition is denied, that would mean the zoning stays as it is?
If the zoning stays the same, the minute we would get our final approval from the septic, Rochelle said next week, "We'll make a decision right away, and we'll start the septic and well." And then we'll follow any normal building permit timeline. Usually there's six months on a building permit before they expire. I believe we'll be well into the construction process, because then there's, we've already taken all the big work out of the way. It's just waiting on the septic field.
So would you say six months, 12 months to open?
Between six to, to be done six months, to be open six to 10 months, because opening time's a little bit different than being 100% complete.
And you started to answer this early, but if this zoning is changed, where does that leave you, Mr. Bruno, in the property-owning entity?
Good question, because where do we go? You know, it's just, I don't have no answers for him. You know, that's, if there's no special use, that's throwing that other money away, and I couldn't in good conscience tell him to spend anything else. It'd be ridiculous.
So if that happened, the next step would be applying for a rezoning in the special use?
Correct.
Is there anything else you think it's important for the board to know before they make their decision?
No, just ask that they uphold the special use, give us an opportunity to run the thing back again.
All right, then I have no further questions. I have a couple of comments, if the board will indulge, or if they have any more questions for Mr. Arena.
I do have questions. You talk about the proposed septic system that's going to have to be installed. Where will that be located on the property?
It's to be located on the far westerly end of the property, where according to Zeitler's proposal, they're going to dig up and put an above-ground waste, waste health system, NEO system. And that'll run that entire westerly side and terminate at the current tanks.
Where are the current tanks located?
Current tanks are located, go off the corner of the main building right there. And go directly west. They're right in that little triangle there between where the old house was and where the building is. And the tanks are 2,000, 2,500 gallon concrete tanks, which are not in bad shape. But they're only a small portion of what these new systems do, from what I understand.
Is the entire septic, proposed septic system going to be located on the north property? At the intersection of 30 and 251?
It's going to run down and it's going to have to, from what I know, from what I understand, he needs 85 feet. To run this re-filtering system and then another 25 feet for this off drainage. So whatever that, I believe there's 225 feet to that second lot, but I'm not 100% sure. I wouldn't want to say that it doesn't tail into his other owner, his other lot. But that would be the greenfield part of the septic. That's what's left at the end.
And the health department will approve that if it's crossing two lots?
Yeah, well, she was out, Jennifer was out. There was her suggestion in this whole NEO system.
And she is aware that it's two separate lots, though?
Well, she knows that we own all the property we were standing on.
Right. And that's why I just am trying to clarify that she knows.
Yeah, we own.
Two separate lots, even though you own them all.
Right. When we were talking about the property itself, and she originally thought it was short. I said, it's not short because we also own that other 300 feet, which goes all the way back up to the corn on the south side.
You talk about having over $300,000 into this project so far, is that correct?
Correct.
And what, what makes up that 300,000?
His initial investments onto the property, initial remodeling, there was some other work that things he put in, legal. You know, whatever he gives me the paper and that's what it is, that's what I look at.
Okay. Well, you talk about initial remodeling. Is that, that has taken place within the last two years?
Well, there was some work that was borrowed in the initial loan. You know, you're asking what that was for. So the loan to that, to Mr. Horn was for some remodeling and things that were taking place in the club. I don't know exactly what Mr. Horn did because he passed away. But that money's buried in that, in Mr. Bruno's investment to Mr. Horn.
So Mr., this 300,000 is related to Mr. Bruno's previous investment in the previously existing club?
And the borrowing of the money, the mortgage, correct.
So how much has been spent in the last two years to get this project up and running of that 300,000?
Out of that 300, we spent between, the original investment was 270 and we spent another 75,000 just in the last. Five or six months, I'll just get the demo, the debris removed.
So your main investment, since the county has brought this action, has just been in removing the, the buildings and the debris?
The additional money is correct. You're right.
Okay. Nothing further.
So on the, on the petition, it states on January 16th, 2007, the Lee County Board granted a special use permit to Jalapeno Peets Incorporated. Jalapeno Pepe's Incorporated. Who is that?
In what year?
2007.
Well, that would have been, that would have been owner, way owners before, I believe. Way, way before our involvement.
So who is the, the loan he took back was with Mr. Horn?
Was Mr. Horn, correct.
So when did he come into this establishment?
I want to, as far as I could tell by the paperwork, I think sometime in 2018, 2007, I believe that's when that was.
Okay. Another question?
Any other questions?
So just for clarification, after all of the cross questions and a little bit more detail has come to light. The current owner has been involved in the project in a sizable way since 2019, correct?
No.
That was your testimony that he had taken over everything as of 2019?
He mortgaged the property. That's, that's, that's what he got involved. He mortgaged the property, loaned the money for Mr. Horn who was doing.
That, even though the establishment had been closed at that time?
I'm not sure of the day when it closed. I was here at the last board meeting. So everything that took place prior to Mr. Bruno making the purchase, which I believe took place in 17 or 18, it's when Mr. Horn died. That he had to get involved and that's when he asked me to come out here.
So you're, when did you take over the project?
I came out here sometime and I believe a few months before that zoning hearing.
So the beginning of 2021?
No, it was in 2020, I believe.
2020. So from 2020 until 2023, the progress on this parcel has been. Demolition and debris removal and investigative work for a septic and well issue. And that's the total of it.
Well, we've been working inside. It hasn't been three years. It's been roughly. Last time we were here, I think we're running up to two years in September. So basically we're looking at about 17 months. And I believe that's what I stated. So for 17 months, it seems like a crazy time. But not when it was, comes when you have to figure in how we got to get to that point.
What was done to the property before the hearing that the county had brought to you?
What's that, ma'am?
What was done with the property before the county had brought the last petition?
I don't believe anything.
So that's all that had taken place in 17 months. But it is your testimony that the business will be operational so long as the special use stands within the next 12?
Yes. All the leg, all the hearts has been done. You know, the demo's been done. We've heard, we've cleared the septic hurdle. We've cleared the hurdle with the health department. It's a matter of permitting, drawings and moving forward.
And did you come with any of those drawings and desires to the hearing tonight to oppose the motion?
No, not at all. I was not about to spend another $30,000 on drawings until we knew exactly where everybody stood.
You didn't come with any of your proposals that you have, just informal drawings, nothing?
No.
Okay.
Do you understand our problem here?
I sort of do, yeah.
Our problem is if a special use is not used or it's special use for a three-year period, which it hasn't. Then we're supposed to revoke it.
Okay. And what we're, what we're asking is to give the exception to that rule so we can get this all back on track.
And we tried to give you that exception a year ago.
Two years.
Two years.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. What's that?
Two years ago.
And we gave you that time and it still hasn't progressed far enough. And that's.
Well, but you're, you're correct. You are correct. But there, there were some specific hurdles that were not, you know, wasn't just run out and get it done. It, it just wasn't. I mean, and it has no, it's no excuse that we're, or I'm 90 miles away. But there were some certain things where we just couldn't get certain people to get out and do some of the things we wanted in the timely fashion that we needed. And I kept, that's why I kept running progress reports all the time. You know, I can't get this done. I can't get this done. It's not that we were not trying or we were just trying to sit on the special use because then I would agree with you 100%. That wasn't the case.
Do you understand that given that testimony that you just stated, it gives us reason to be concerned about your future progress as well?
Not really. Because I'm, if you keep the special use, there's no reason to be concerned with the special process because we found the septic guy that we needed. We have the contractors that we needed. That was the, the original issue.
So will you be relocating to be closer than 90 miles to oversee the project?
Well, I'll be here all the time. Yeah, well, once we start, once we start building, then I'll run it like I do all the other 440 projects I do a year. And that will be to sit down and, and make sure there's a project manager out there.
So will you be staying on premise then during the construction?
On that site?
Yes.
No, we'll stay, we'll stay close.
Okay.
Did you have any more comments?
Comments, yes. I'm done with questions.
Okay. You got any questions? Anybody got any suggestions on what we should do at this point?
Did you want to take comments?
Is this a testimony?
Yes.
Okay, then it testifies.
So I would like to comment and forgive me, one of the hazards of being lawyers, I tend to get into, to legal arguments as well as purely factual. But there's, there's three issues. I would like to bring to the board's attention here. One is there seems to be some doubt about Mr. Arena's ability or the company's ability to finish this job in the next year. If they haven't been able to finish in the previous two. And as Mr. Arena has, has indicated, there have been some significant hurdles these past couple of years that are no longer present. The, the septic issue alone, I've had many communications back and forth with, with Mr. Arena. Which, which no, I don't have here today, but as attorney client communications, I wouldn't want to be presenting them anyway, other than just to say that he has been in constant communication with me. Indicating that they talked to this contractor, they talked to this contractor, this is the hurdle they're having with this one. They, they had this plan for a septic that turns out is not permissible, given the physical structure of the land. So in, until those things started happening, it was very difficult to tell what sort of septic system would be needed. And Mr. Arena obviously knows a lot more about this than I do. So I, I won't try to give too much more detail on that. Decides to say that he is correct. It has been a significant hurdle. It has taken a lot of time to try to find someone who's not only is qualified to do the type of work that is necessary, but is available. As I'm sure everyone knows, getting contractors the last few years has been difficult because there's been a lot of contracting that's been done. All the contractors I know have been very, very busy going from one job to another. So especially when you have something that is this specialized in terms of a $50,000 septic system or $75,000, I think is what he indicated was today. Finding someone who can do that is, is much easier said than done. Not only that it's qualified, but it's available to do it. Leaving aside the septic issue, the reason that we're here is because, at least my understanding is because under 10 2D 3 in the county code. There is a, an indication that after three years of discontinued use. For a continuous period of three years, the Board of Appeals, and I'm quoting here, has the power to institute proceedings on its own motion to consider the reclassification of the property to another district. There's, there's nothing in the code saying that after three years, something must be changed. There's not even something saying after three years, something should be changed. All the code says is that if three years have passed, you as a board can say, hey, we should look at this. We should figure out what's going on. So I, I, I think it's important to make that distinction because it comes down to what, what sort of presumption are we working with? Whenever there's a petition to change something, the presumption is always against it being changed. And it, it seems like there's an inclination here that the presumption should be switched because of the time that has passed. Going by the very language of the code, that's not the case. The presumption is still that zoning change stays as it is unless those findings of fact indicate that it should be switched. And then delving into that language a little bit more. It says that if the use of said property has been discontinued. And I think that there's a pretty open question about whether or not remodeling or changing a building is, does constitute use. This building hasn't just been sitting empty, sitting idle. The, the building has been, or the, the property, I shouldn't say the building, because this is much more than just one building. Has had a lot of construction, a lot of demolition, a lot of research, a lot of money invested in it. For the specific purpose of using it for the zoning classification that it currently has. While that might not be the typical language of use as in it is open currently. It's certainly not been a vacant building. As Mr. Arena testified to earlier, if this zoning is changed, all it is going to do is further delay the project. And lead to a petition in front of, in front of the board to try to re-change it back to what it currently is. And I, I certainly don't want to be wasting the board's time with having it revoked only to have it reinstated in a couple of months. Not, not of course to presume what, what the board would do. In short, there's been a lot of money invested in this project. Most of it was the initial investment granted. Mr. Bruno did not come into this property with the intent of running this establishment. He loaned someone money with the understanding that they could pay it back based on the type of business, the type of viable business that was there. That individual died, the mortgage was foreclosed upon, he became the owner of the property. And all he has been doing here is trying to recoup his initial investment, the initial loan and the money that he's invested since then. Based on the, the generous cooperation of the board a couple of years ago to allow some more time. The, the part of the project moving forward is much more standard construction. There, there are no further delays expected of the magnitude that have happened the last couple of years. I thank you for your time and if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to try to answer them.
So it's your, your testimony that you believe that the attempts that have taken place over the last 17 months are constituting use?
I think the legal question is an open question. I mean, I, I can't really testify to what the meaning of the law is in terms of a fact testimony, but in terms of.
The way that you read the ordinance, is it your opinion that it is specifically targeted towards the reference of the special use which is cited within the ordinance?
I'm sorry, could you rephrase that?
Is it your opinion that the way that you read the question, it is specifically targeting the special use which is afforded, mentioned in the ordinance itself?
The language of the ordinance that I quoted.
Is talking about the special use, correct?
It, it is talking about a principal or a special use.
And do you feel like either a principal or a special use has taken place in the last 17 months at this project site?
I do.
Can you please elaborate how a special use for adult entertainment or car sales has taken place here within the last 17 months?
Uh, for, for car sales, there certainly hasn't been. And we're not, we're not contesting that, a petition to change this or to eliminate the special use for the car sale. As far as the special use for the adult entertainment. Any sort of business has multiple phases. There's the initial planning stage, there's the initial investment saves, and there's the opening stage. That's all part of running a business. I'm, I'm not here to present, I'm not here presenting any sort of appellate court cases saying that yes, use can mean those. It can mean as broad of things that I'm saying, but I am saying in the, in the common language, use is not as simple as having the doors open. If there are investment backed expectations, meaning if someone is putting money into something for the specific purpose of having a specific outcome. And the rug is pulled out from underneath them towards that specific outcome, that's certainly an interruption in their business. So the, the way that I think this counts as use is it is. The property owner has been taking money, putting into this property with the understanding that the sole viable business is the adult entertainment establishment.
And they were aware of the three-year clause, correct?
The petition filed in '21 referenced the same clause and we actually had the same discussion. Just shy of two years ago, that the three-year clause is not at all mandatory. All that it does is allow the Board of Appeals to move on its own motion to consider a reclassification. And it's not to reconsider the classification, which might seem like just a play on words, but it comes back to the presumption that we're talking about. If this was allowing a reconsideration of a previous classification, then the presumption could be that the classification go back to how it was. But that's not what the, the ordinance says. It says to consider the reclassification, which is exactly what we're doing here. And frankly, the, the three-year term is. Is only applicable here because it was cited in the petition. The, the petition was filed by. By the zoning office, not the Board of Appeals. And the three-year timeframe allows for the Board of Appeals to. timeframe allows for the Board of Appeals to move on its own motion to consider the reclassification.
And you understand that this has been in excess of three years, correct?
Certainly.
Did you come with any evidence to support your communications to refute or to oppose this motion?
Well, the substantial verbal testimony, and then I have no physical copies of anything, if that's what you're asking. Although there have been...
So you didn't compile a list of the quarterly updates in which you provided to the zoning office, or you didn't come with a proposed drawing from the business owner as his representation for the future use of this establishment?
The quarterly updates sent to the zoning office were conveyed to the board quarterly, at least that was the representation from the zoning office.
The question is whether you came with them as evidence tonight.
I did not come with them as evidence today. And as far as drawings, I have none of them today. However, if the board would like to condition a denial of this petition on the presentment of drawings within some reasonable time, I don't think that would be an issue.
And you were aware that this hearing was taking place, correct?
Yes.
And you were present at the last hearing?
The last hearing being in '21?
Yeah.
Yes. Although I should clarify, these petitions are not the same petitions that were done in 2021. I believe those petitions were a part of a larger map amendment to reclassify this entire intersection to, I think it was agricultural. So while these are for two of the same parcels, they are separate and distinct petitions.
And are you familiar with the Lee County Comprehensive Plan?
Not in as much context as I would like to be.
So can you speak to how this business and this zoning of I-3 heavy industrial fits within the Lee County Comprehensive Plan?
My understanding of the plan, and this is partially based on the last meeting that we had, is that industrial is, I mean, certainly it can't go next to residential, but it is most appropriately placed in business, heavy business areas outside of, far away from our large groups of people live, and next to agricultural property.
Okay, but are you able to tell me exactly how this specific project fits within any of that? Do you have a testimony on to how this business with this zoning fits within the Lee County Comprehensive Plan?
Only to the extent that the board back in, I believe it was 2007, found that it did. And in order to find that, well, those, I think we're asking the wrong question. The question should be, is the petition fitting into the comprehensive plan? It's already been established that this current zoning fits into the comprehensive plan by the board back in 2007. But I should say, I wasn't there for that, but based on the findings of fact that have to be made, it's something that must have been found back in 2007.
No further questions?
Just a reminder to the board that the state's attorney's office is your legal counsel and that Mr. Whitcomb is providing his interpretation.
I second that.
So to that point, I got to ask, do you think that's a reason to delay this a month until our state's attorney is present?
That is up to you guys. If you feel like you need legal counsel, I would suggest tabling it so that we can arrange that, but that would be your guys' decision.
The problem I see with that is that leaves him in limbo. He don't know what to do yet for another month.
For how long? One month?
It's been almost 24, so what's one more?
Yeah, but I don't want him spending more money if we're going to take it away from it.
I would desire further discussion on why further legal counsel would be necessitated. Don't see a need for further legal interpretation. His opinion on what can or cannot be done is an opinion, and the Lee County zoning office and board sees that this is a petition worth hearing. I don't know what, it would be my question for what area to delay.
I can't give you an answer. I'm just throwing it out for discussion right now. I can make an argument that we shouldn't delay it also.
Do you have a counter, one of why we should, hearing both?
No, no.
Look at findings of fact?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So we need to clarify what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with petition 1612.
Correct.
Map amendment.
Correct. Correct.
So we're not dealing with special use?
Not at all. Not on this petition.
So I'm going to read through these same questions then, because it's still, it's a map amendment. Number one, the existing uses of nearby property. Ag-1 to the west and the south of it, correct? Correct, D?
I'm sorry?
Ag-1 to the west and the south.
Correct.
To the north across the road, that became Ag-1 also.
Correct. The property to the east is also Ag-1. Property to the east.
So all four sides are Ag-1?
Top two corners are C-3.
Yes.
And then the southeast corner is Ag-1, and the southwest corner is I-3.
So this specific parcel has C-3 to the north?
Correct.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought that went back to Ag.
No, it didn't.
So C-3 to the north. Ag-1 to the west. Ag-1 to the south. And Ag-1 to the east.
Correct.
Okay, that's the surrounding existing uses of nearby property. Number two, well, load on that.
So do we have a motion that that's what we want to say in that first one?
So move.
Second. Okay.
So did you get down that the state of Illinois is I-1, Hallis said?
No.
Ag-1.
That's Ag-1.
That's Ag-1, the state of Illinois is?
Yes.
That's interesting.
And the southeast corner?
Southeast corner.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
B, the extent property values will be diminished by any zoning restrictions.
Changing the parcel zoning from I-3 heavy industrial district with a special use to C-3 general business district will limit the use of the parcel to strictly general business. Changing from I-3 to C-3 will limit the use to just general business.
I was going to suggest that maybe you would say that the petitioner testified that property values will be diminished.
Not the petitioner, the owner. She's the petitioner.
That's true, that's true.
The owner of the property said the property...
And I don't know whether that's proper to put it there or not, you know, I just throw it out.
Well, that's, that's an opinion.
So is ours.
I know, so you can leave ours in there, and you can leave the...
The first one is a fact, going from I-3 to C-3 will only allow for general business. So the second one is the opposing party opined.
Okay.
Thanks, Craig.
Anything else? So I have just changing I-3 will limit use to general business. I-3 special use.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve that.
We have a motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Rex seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
C, the extent to which the destruction of property values promotes the public health, safety, and welfare.
The extent to which destruction of property values promotes the public health, safety, and welfare is none.
You're sure of that? You don't see any advantage to the public health, safety, and welfare by changing this?
I don't see a destruction. Oh, to how it promotes? What I did not find in the testimony of the petitioner or the opposing party, how it promoted public health, safety, or welfare with evidence or testimony.
No testimony to prove a...
Improvement of the following.
Confirm or deny?
Okay, so I got no testimony to confirm or deny a promotion of the public health, safety, and welfare.
Do we have a motion for that one?
So move.
Rex makes motion.
Second.
Craig seconds. Any discussion further? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
D, the gain to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner.
I believe again that there was no testimony or evidence to the gain of the public with the rezoning.
Okay. I'll just say no testimony to the, to whether the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner.
Say that again.
There was no testimony to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner.
There was no testimony to the gain of the public.
To the gain of the public.
There was testimony by the opposing party to the hardship in which the business owner would endure. A perceived monetary hardship.
You're a whole lot better at this than I am. You didn't say, write down what I just said, did you? Make a motion on that.
Do we have a motion on that?
I move to approve that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any, any conversation on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next one. The suitability of the subject property for the zone purposes.
The property is no longer used for I-3 heavy industrial with a special use zoning classification. A more suitable zoning would be to amend the classification to C-2 general business. C, it should be C-3.
Anything else on that? He's got two more lines if you need to fill.
Oh, I could make them write.
Read his second statement.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I believe that the surrounding parcels zoning and the desire within the Lee County Comprehensive Plan to keep zoning similar within districts supports the classification of this parcel zoned to C-3.
Okay. Want to read that back?
That was just a discussion. That was just a discussion portion, you don't have to write that.
What's that?
It's just discussion. You don't have to find it as a fact, just the discussion on the fact.
I just saw Mike writing over here, that was why I...
I move that we vote on Mr. Myers' reading.
Do we have a second?
Finding.
Second.
Mike seconds. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The length of time the property has been vacant as zoned, considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the subject property. So it's essentially been five years that it's been...
It has been vacant since 2018 as zoned.
Want to read that back?
I just wrote down vacant for five years as zoned.
Good. Any other thing? We have a motion?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is the compatibility of the present and proposed classification with the comprehensive plan.
C-3 would be consistent with surrounding properties.
And more? You understand it there? Okay. C-3 is consistent with the surrounding property.
Good. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Craig and Rex. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
The last one is whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use. The last one is whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use.
I don't believe there was any testimony by the petitioner or the opposition to these, public need for C3.
Public need for C3? No testimony by the petitioner or the opposition for the public need of C3. That's what I got.
Do we have a motion on that?
So move.
Rex makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Craig, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
So then, the recommendation to the full county board.
I move to recommend to the full county board the MAP amendment.
Petition number 23-P-1612.
There you go.
Okay, we have a recommend to the county board to make the MAP amendment. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. It'll go to the full county board on the 20th of July.
We're not done yet.
The? The next petition is petition number 23-P-1613. The petitioner is Lee County Zoning Office, permanent parcel number 20-11-23-100-005, revocation of special use by Viola Township. D?
Notification for this petition was sent by mail to all adjacent landowners, county board members, District 2, Viola Township Road Commissioner, Viola Township Supervisor, and the Illinois Department of Transportation. The zoning board agenda in this petition is displayed for notice on the Lee County website. So I'd like to submit a copy of the file stamped petition as exhibit one. Exhibit two and, exhibit two is the legal notification in the Dixon newspaper. On March 7th, 2018, the liquor county, Lee County Liquor Commission and Lee County Executive Committee revoked the business liquor license and its adult entertainment license was never renewed, therefore the business was closed. The updates that have been provided on the progress of opening the adult entertainment establishment over the past two years have shown little advancement to the reopening of the business. The owner is no closer to opening than when he was made aware of the septic system situation two years ago. Since the use of the property has been discontinued for a continuous period of over five years now, Lee County Zoning Office is requesting revocation of the special use for an adult entertainment establishment at the property of 2849 US Route 30, Compton, Illinois.
So you also have a letter saying that the Viola Township is in favor of this?
I have exhibit three is from the Health Department, who has not received contact from the property owner and how they wanted to proceed with the requirements of the new septic system. And I have the same minutes from the Viola Township as exhibit four.
Stating that they?
Stating that they support the revocation of the special use.
Any other questions for D? Any questions? Okay. You have any questions for D?
No, no, thank you.
No, or any testimony?
All right. And on this one?
Does anybody wanna give any testimony or anything?
Does anybody wanna give any testimony? Okay.
Any public comment?
What's that?
Now comment, public comment.
Comments? Anybody have any comments? Comments? No comments.
This one we just need a motion for.
This is one we just need a motion for.
Well, I make a motion that we recommend to the full county board that they approve the Lee County Zoning Office petition. Number 23-P-163, for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other commentary?
I have a question. D, has the state's attorney reviewed this then on this issue?
He was given the petition, so I'm not sure if he reviewed it or not.
Based on what, three of us were here when this happened in '07, based on what happened then, I hope he knows what's going on.
It still goes back to Craig. It's been five years.
I know.
That, that's?
It says save it up in the state Supreme Court.
Yeah, but that's the overriding issue here that is causing this. I don't see how you get around that fact, you know? That's why I'm like? We've revoked other ones for less than five years.
Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor of the revocation of the special use permit, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. The next special use? Gotta get the right numbers. This petition number 23-P-1614. And the petitioner is Lee County Zoning Office, permanent parcel number 11-23-100-006, revocation of special use, Viola Township. And basically, is your testimony the same?
All adjacent landowners are notified, members of the board, Viola Township Road Commissioner, Township Supervisor, Illinois Department of Transportation. The notice was on the website. Exhibit one is your stamped petition. Exhibit two is the Dixon newspaper notification. On June 19th, 2007, the Lee County Board approved this petition 07P1439, requesting a special use for the purpose of selling automobiles at the parcel identified as 2011-23-100-006. As far as the zoning office can recall, there has not been automotive sales at this location for over 10 years. And since the use of the property has been discontinued for a continuous period of over three years, the zoning office is requesting revocation of the special use for selling automobiles at this parcel.
You have a letter from Viola Township?
Exhibit three is a letter from Viola Township, giving support for the revocation of the special use.
Go again? Anybody have any questions on this? Any comments?
When is the last time this special use was utilized?
I can't tell you.
Okay.
I cannot tell you.
I make a motion that we recommend to the full county board petition number 23-P-1614 for approval.
I'm sorry, did we hear comments from the public?
Yes, for comments.
Okay, and no one had any testimony to provide?
Nobody had anything to say.
Okay.
So we have a motion for the revocation of the special use permit on petition 23-P-1614. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any comments, any thing that needs to be said? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. So this petition will also go to the full county board on the 20th of July. So, at this point, need to have a motion to recess until after the county board vote on the above petitions on July 20th, '23.
I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess until after the county board vote on the July 20th, '23. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals will be 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 3rd. Do we have petitions for that night?
We already have two petitions.
Two, okay.
Just to let you guys know, one of those petitions will involve an ordinance change, so I will get that, that proposed ordinance that will be going before the Planning Commission this month to you guys for your review.